We're going to go ahead and get started. Henry County Board of Commissioners, this is a special call meeting, 9:30 Tuesday, July 19th. Special call meeting to, it's a public hearing for our Tax Commissioner to make a presentation regarding the millage rate. We're going to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I'd like to call the meeting to order, and I'd like to ask our Tax Commissioner, Michael Harris, Sherri Matthews, David Smith, to come forward to begin the presentation.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners.
And the Henry County community. I'm going to kick this off with the Tax Commissioner as he's conducting his public hearing for the millage rate. I just wanted to make certain, to remind us that back in May, we adopted our budget. And we're going to go over some of the highlights of that budget adoption, and then the need for the Tax Commissioner in his discussion for the millage rate. We propose the budget for fiscal year 2023 of $216,907,158,000, million dollars. That's up $27 million from our fiscal year '22 budget. This budget is going to be based on the current millage rate. We're not raising the millage rate from 12.733. It includes investments in competitive compensation, making certain we maintain great employee benefits, and adding new officers as well as firefighters. The increase is largely due to our county's tax digest growth. It's not due to increasing the rate at all. And we're only going to use current revenues generated by that to pay for our current expenditures, so that there is no built-in increase for any ongoing expenditures. At one of the meetings, we talked about how much revenue would be lost if we rolled back our millage rate. If we rolled it back one mill, we'd lose $9.6 million and be able to sustain the budget that we adopted back in May. There will be questions that pertain to the components of the 13.38% projected growth. It's primarily due to inflation and new housing inventory. Questions you have for me before the Tax Commissioner? Mr. Harris?
Good morning, Chair. Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, everyone. It's good to be back for our annual review on Millage and Digest. The nice thing, again, as Mr. Smith alluded to, a lot of the information you're going to see today is very similar, in fact, exactly what you've seen in the past years, because there's been few changes that have been made, particularly as it relates to the millage rate. What I'm going to go through is go through our same basic conversation, kind of gives the overview of the process itself, and then speak on a couple of the changes that we've made this year within our office. What is a millage rate? Quite simply, millage rates are used, are the tax rates that are used to calculate our local property taxes. This rate represents the amount a homeowner has to pay for every $1,000 of a property's assessed value. Assessed value includes both the structure itself and the land on which it sits. Property values are broken down into two components, fair market value and assessed value. Fair market value is as determined by our Tax Assessors Office, they come out annually and do an assessment of property. They mail the notices out in early part of the year, April, May timeframe, and taxpayers have 45 days to appeal once they receive that assessment notice. The assessed value is quite simply, once that fair market value is established, 40% of that value makes up your assessed value, assessed property value. So calculating the property tax at 12.733, as stated by Mr. Smith, again, this has been the county's millage rate for seven, eight-plus years now. It has not changed, it's not being proposed to be changed as it stands right now. The calculation is a simple formula which involves the assessed value minus any exemptions that may be applied, times your millage rate, and that gives you your taxes due. Going through a simple example using both a homesteaded property and a non-homesteaded property, so folks can see what that difference, how the difference works out. Homesteaded property with a fair market value of $225,000. Fair market value would be, again, as stated in the previous note, that 225 times the 40% would give you an assessed value of $90,000. Homestead exemption for a standard L1, basic homestead exemption is $15,000, would give you, leave you with a taxable value of $75,000. Times your millage rate of 12.733 would leave you $954 and $98 in county taxes. And again, I'm stressing county taxes, this is not the overall full millage rate. Again, based on the standard L1 exemption. For a non-homesteaded property, same property value, same, same fair market value, once again, same assessed value to 90,000. Since they're not have a, since they do not have a homestead, there would not be that deduction for your $15,000 of homestead. So your taxes would be calculated based on the 90,000 times your 12.733 millage rate, which would give you a county tax of $1,145.97. Difference of roughly $190.99. So we always tell people, you know, your homestead, for your basic homestead is ballpark worth about $200. So again, it's certainly every little bit helps. Want to give another example, which is germane to what we're experiencing this year. What happens to my taxable if the property value goes up and the millage rate remains the same, which is what's being proposed so far this year? Property values, again, taking an example of a property value that increases from 200 to 240,000, which represents a 20% increase. Be your 240, your new fair market value, times your 40%, would give you a $96,000 assessed value. Times your millage rate of 12.733, which would give you $1,222,377, again, for a non-homesteaded property. Increased amount of $203 on a non-homesteaded property is based on that value of 20% increase. We talk about this every single year, the provision as it relates here in Henry County, which is unique in that it offers a frozen provision. So those homesteaded properties that are homesteaded would not see an increase in county taxes due to the frozen exemption. And again, if the base value of the property is less than the current assessed value. The frozen exemption does not apply to school taxes, which is a key point here, as you see a little bit later on in the presentation, or improvements made to the house or additional land that's been acquired since the time of the initial homestead was approved. So again, the frozen provision, again, this is something that's unique to Henry County. It's only a handful of counties and jurisdictions within the state that offer this type of exemption. It was enacted by local legislation back in 2004, as a lot of people may remember, back in the early 2000s. Property values were increasing exponentially because of the incredible growth that Henry County was experiencing. And the board at the time felt it was necessary to do something to kind of help with those long-term citizens that were living here, to help reduce their tax burden. So they enacted this provision back in 2004. It includes only the primary structure itself and residents up to five contiguous acres of the land. The base year value is the fair market value of your home from the year prior to filing your homestead. So if you were to file this year, today, your base year would be 2022, because it's going to apply the prior year. Exemption is automatically renewed from year to year, so long as a resident continues to occupy the home as a primary resident. So if it changes ownership, then that new owner would have to come back in and apply. People often call and ask, because why do we need to come back in and renew my frozen provision? No, once you apply and are approved for your homestead, it automatically applies and it'll, it'll set your fair market value based on that, the year, that prior year's fair market value. Homeowner pays on the base year value of the county and water portions of the tax bill, even if the value increases beyond that base year. So if your initial property value in the year that you charge, the year that you have your homestead is 200,000 for your fair market value, 10 years from then, 10 years later, is 300,000, you would still be taxed on your county tax and your water tax at that $200,000 value. That's the simplest way to explain it for folks. And again, once again, that only applies to your county and water taxes, or millage rates, rather. If the property value decreases below the base year, homeowner would pay based on the lower valuation. So if your property were to decrease from 200,000 down to 100,000, you would still pay the lower of those two numbers. You wouldn't still have to be locked in at the 200,000 number. And we saw a lot of that, certainly at the, when recession hit in 2008, a lot of those values went, dipped below what their base years were. The exemptions we have, and again, apologies for the slides, a little bit difficult to, we'll have this posted on our website as well. This kind of runs through what all the exemptions that are offered are. Our standard county exemption, as noted earlier, is $15,000 for your standard L1. At age 62, you get into your age exemption, which exempts you, offers exemptions from the school board taxes. Again, at age 62, you get an exemption, and it increases at age 65, at age 68, and at age 70, you are no longer having to pay any school taxes. And again, those exemptions apply solely to your school and water taxes only. Additional exemptions that exist are disability exemptions, veterans' disabilities, and that amount, this past year was 101,754. That amount changes every year, it's shown typically in the red. So we always call it, people often call our office to find out what that amount is, because that, the state determines that amount on an annual basis. Surviving spouse from armed conflict, surviving spouse for a peace officer or firefighter, conservation exemptions, freeport exemptions, and forest land protection exemptions, which we don't have a great deal of anymore. So where do our tax sellers go? And this is kind of the, what I was alluding to earlier, as far as for that percentage of the, of the millage. So as it stands right now, the 12.733 in mills, that represents 37% of the total taxes paid by county residents. The remaining, remaining of that, of those taxes, 50% of that goes to the schools for maintenance and operations, that's 20 mills. An additional 8%, 3.62 mills, also goes to the schools to cover their school bond. The remaining 5% is to the water authority, and that's the two mills that they utilize for the, they've had in place for a number of years. And that's to pay for things such as the reservoir that's been in place for a number of years to, to secure the, our, our water supply here in the county. So again, people often ask, how is it broken down? This one, to give just a pictorial, so people can see exactly where the percentage of the, of the taxes go to. So prior to all that, we have to first go through this digest process. And again, this process is a collaboration between my office, the Tax Commissioner, the Tax Assessors, and the Board of Commissioners, as well as the Board of Education and the city jurisdictions. Tax Assessors Office, Tax Commissioner's Office, the Board of Education, the Board of Commissioners, and the cities of Stockbridge, McDonough, Hampton, and Locust Grove. And once that's all completed, everything is submitted to the Department of, State Department of Revenue for their final review and approval. The tax digest itself is simply a listing of assessments and exemptions consisting of real and personal property, timber, mobile homes, motor vehicles, heavy-duty equipment, public utilities. The digest itself must be approved by the State Department of Revenue before any taxes can be mailed out. Bills must be received 60 days in advance of the due date. So for here in Henry County, our due date is November 16th, so bills must be received prior to September 16th. Henry County bills are mailed, again, by September 1st to make sure we meet that deadline on a regular basis, and we've always met it. The proposed 2022 millage rates, as they stand right now, this gives a, just a quick graphic of what they're looking at for unincorporated Henry County residents, as well as each of the cities. And as you see, for unincorporated Henry County, the countywide millage rate proposed at 8.699. And a few years ago, the Board of Commissioners opted to change the format and go back to, and go to a special service district, which guarantees a certain portion of the millage would be dedicated towards certain services. In this case, it's fire, police, recreation, and unincorporated, other, other unincorporated services. And this shows that breakdown, so for the fire department, of the 12.733, 1.211 mill would go strictly to fire. 1.904 mills would go toward police services. 0.601 goes towards recreation, parks and recreation services. And unincorporated, for those services, other, other services within unincorporated areas, be 0.318. That gives your total service deliveries, special service district millage of 4.034 here in unincorporated county, which gives you a total of...
Again, right here, 12.733.
Which as stated previously, has not changed in a number of years. Looking beyond that number, you'll see the millage rates for school maintenance and operations, which is 20 mills, school bond, which is a 3.628 mills, and your water authority, which is two mills, which will live a total millage, again, your total taxable millage of 38.361, which again, if you go back in previous years, you'll find out that millage has not changed in well over five, six, five to seven years. And also gives a further breakdown of all the other, of our municipalities as well. Very few changes, with the exception of McDonough's there, city millage has gone down slightly, and City of Hampton this year is proposing a 6.5 millage increase, non-rollback this year on theirs, as being heard currently. This is an example bill, just kind of shows our residents a breakdown of how the fair market value adjusted, the assessed value, where the exemptions will be listed, and how they'll be listed on your bill. Just to kind of give an idea of how it's broken down on your bill and what information to look for on your bill. One thing we're really proud of this year is we've made a change in our tax bill this year, and I've given each one of the Commissioners kind of a copy of that. In past years, we've had this, we've been doing this for, I've been doing this for three years now. And one of the comments that often get brought up is about, how could we add and give more information to our residents as it relates to taxation, the tax bills? So working with Lynn Carty, our property tax director and deputy tax commissioner, and her staff, we went back, reviewed a number of other jurisdictions, and pulled and find, try to look at different information to see what's available. What we, what can we put on our tax bill to give residents more information, make it clearer and a little more concise as far as what, where the taxes, what the, the, the source of the taxes, and exactly how it's getting broken down. And we added on the back page of the tax bill, an informational page, just gives additional information on, on the source of the taxes, what your, different jurisdictions do, what my office does, what our Tax Assessors Office does, what their role and responsibilities are, and just additional information. So this was an opportunity, we saw this as an opportunity to provide more information to our residents and help further educate them. And again, all this information is also included on our website. This is simply the schedule today, represents the first public hearing. We'll have a second public hearing this evening at 6:30, and proposed adoption next Tuesday at 9:30, or 9:45, rather. With that, that concludes, and happy to address any questions or comments that the board may have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Harris. This property tax statement is, is really good. It gives the, our citizens the opportunity to really see what the breakdown is. So thank you all for putting together this type of statement. Does any of the other Commissioners have any questions? This is a public hearing, so if there's anyone that would like to come forth and speak, Stephanie, you have some people signed up?
They didn't have to pre-register, so they can come forward.
So do we have anyone wishing to come forward? Please come forward and state your name.
Good morning. My name is John Blue, I live in Henry County, in the Fairhaven neighborhood over off of Elliott Road. And our neighborhood has discussed a little bit about some of the things that have come up, and I'm, I'm not representing everybody in the neighborhood, but I do take a representation for some, some of us. We feel like this millage rate increase is a double dip, because you're, you're moving the market value of our homes up over 20% year-on-year, and you're collecting the current millage rate on a 20% increase on the market value. If you increase the millage rate by 20%, now you're collecting another 20%. That's the way we see it. So it's a double dip, because we pay, excuse me, we're paying the millage rate on assessed value, or a market value, and then you get to the assessed value and all that, but it's still a 20% increase. My house, we, we built a brand-new house in 2016, and the, the fair market value was about $475,000. Today, five, seven years later, it's $675,000. So you're, you're increasing our property's value, therefore, you're increasing the collection of taxes. With that being said, you know, the, the budget is increased by $27 million. It looks like year-on-year, 22 to 23, which is a, it was a huge jump in budget. So we're concerned on what is the, even though the presentation had some, it's hard to read because it's so small, but had some indication of what, what's causing the budget increases. But for the most part, we're just kind of curious as to, are we managing a budget, or are we just budgeting what we want? People in the county, you know, I think they vote for people to hold these positions to help the taxpayers. We're in a, in a, obviously, a odd state in this world today, and people aren't looking to get their taxes increased. And I think the voters are all going to vote for people that, that have ideas to, to reduce costs, to reduce taxes. And I think that Henry County should be looking at trying to reduce their budget, not, not on important things. We're not saying cut the fire department or anything like that. We're just saying, we have to look at the budget deeper and not just have frivolous spending. And the homeowners are, are the ones that are, you know, in this particular situation, are footing some of the extra taxes. And maybe by double, in, in our opinion, in my opinion. So that's really about all I have to say on that. But I feel like that we should revisit the fact that we're already paying taxes on a higher market value. Why are we going to pay more taxes on a higher millage rate on a higher assessment? Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to come forward and speak?
Pre-register, speak.
No, but he, no, you don't have to pre-register to speak, but gentleman back there raises his hand, come forward. Y'all just come and get in line for those that want to speak. It's a public hearing, so everyone is afforded the opportunity to, to speak.
Good morning, Chair and Commissioners. My name's Don Dunlap at 192 Ashley Drive in McDonough. One of the things that I didn't think about until just a minute ago, when Commissioner Harris put that slide up, was the special service districts. I had wanted to say something about that before. That's amazing. It's so nice to see that we are protecting those public safety budgets. I just think that's really cool, and I wanted to say that. As far as the millage rate itself goes, I know that we're not changing the millage rate, but that since valuations are increasing, that's why you're having the hearing. We've got a, just 9.1% inflation rate. The inflation's the highest it's been in 40 years, since I was a kid. To combat that, the Fed has raised interest rates three times, all right, quarter point, a half point this last month, three-quarters of a point, and next week, it's almost guaranteed to be three-quarters of a point, maybe a full point. So the cost of everything having to do with interest rates is going to be increasing. That inflation rate, the big three components that have gone up are food, energy, and housing. And those are the three things that our lowest-income citizens are going to be most negatively impacted by. They've got to put a roof over their head, they've got to get back and forth to work, they've got to eat. I, I work for another government agency that is going to, from all appearances, they're going to raise their effective taxes on the citizens by about 20%, so they can pay me extra money next year, giving us all an 8% raise. So I'm, I don't have a dog in that particular fight. Yes, costs are going up, but it's not going to negatively impact me like it's going to impact other folks. I understand about the frozen homestead exemption, but if somebody purchases a house, we've reset the clock. If they sell their house and buy something else, if they downsize, whatever, that clock's going to start again at these higher values. So I'm respectfully asking that you guys consider rolling back the millage rate, so that we don't have this dramatic increase in our taxes, at least in the short term, and then maybe come back and visit it next year after inflation's gotten tamped down. Thank you.
Next, sir, come forward, state your name.
Good morning, good morning. My name is Joseph Brown, I just live off of Highway 81. Just going to sort of iterate some of the comments that were already made. I wasn't here early when the meeting first starts, so I don't know what, what originated the proposed increase. That would be always a good start. Why is it necessary to, to increase? What's driving the increase? Well, first of all, when you decide to propose an increase, you have to consider the citizens and what things that they're already paying for. You know, we pay for house maintenance, right? There are things of that sort. So whenever you increase things, some things may have to give, or to pay this over here. So I would have you consider those different things, other costs that we have to deal with, along with paying an increased property tax. I know there are increased inventory in the city of, in the county of, of Henry County, right? So you're getting, you're getting an increased tax there for the increased inventory. And then also, along with that, there's a, there's an increased property tax. So this is a, sort of a double cost on us. Or you're getting a double income with the increased inventory and with the increase in, in tax. So I don't know what your, your, your current budget is, and again, what's driving these costs to increase. But we have to also consider, as was mentioned earlier, our livelihood. We can't always afford to pay additional taxes, right? Because we're paying for other things, then it becomes a priority, what do I pay first? Right? So... And, and, and some of us are on a fixed income, right? We don't, we don't get annual increases. We don't, we don't get annual increases. So whatever, when taxes go up or prices go up, we have to manage the money the best way we can because we're, we're not getting an increased cost of living. At least, at least I don't. Not on a regularity. So these different things need to be considered when we consider taxing the citizen. We came here and, you know, we bought these, these homes, right? And we know cost sort of goes up from time to time, right? But salary does not. At least in my case, being a retiree, cost doesn't, income doesn't go up. But tax and maintenance, those things do go up. So we have to take in consideration when we propose a tax on the citizens, can the citizens afford these increases? Is it fair to them, along with paying these other costs, to survive and, and live in the, the county of Henry County? So I just asked the board members and everyone to just consider, when you decide to approve or not approve these, these increase, just to consider our livelihood and the things that we have to take care of and, and pay for on a monthly and daily basis. That's all I have. Thank you for, for hearing. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to come and speak at the public hearing? Anyone else wishing to come and speak? Okay, here and on, our meeting is adjourned.